I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She didn't breathe today. She didn't make any decisions today. Sit down. (laughing). Here's my phone. I was like, oh, I'm not on it.
Why get criticized?
Did you try to break them?
I totally...
Okay, minutes. Any discussion? Questions?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents, any correspondence have been received? Public comment? Time for the public comment. Do you need a copy of that, Roger?
No.
That all time. Council reports, animal.
Uh, no animal, thank you. They were already moved. Oh, one call responded, John, sorry. I did read that.
A little black dog running around the SNS.
Oh.
There's no way we caught it. We chased it up around, down five blocks or anything, but I thought I knew who it was. Go in, mark them with doors. There was a lady that was right close there, so I called her, that was her warning. But we couldn't catch that dog. We gave it twenty feet of it and they taped him and then turned around and looked at it and they taped it off.
Well, get faster!
(laughing).
I could do it slower. But we don't normally try to catch it. We tried to chase him home, but he wouldn't go anywhere near to where it was. I just fought it with this dog and turned out it was her. She finally got up and came, soon she came around the corner and the dog took off. So we know where it is now.
Better others? Okay, parks.
Pick up garbage and do other activities.
I've got a couple things. Under the Land and Water Council Federation Grant, they, I went through and reviewed all of the requirements and one thing that came up is that if we apply for this grant and the grant is approved, the whole park, all of Timmerman Park, will be turned into this recreation site forever. You cannot build anything on it, you cannot do anything with it unless it's for recreation. Now, talking with Roger and Rodney both, there is a problem because the sewer lagoon is only two cells. If at some point the state says, we need a third cell, we gotta come this direction because there's no way going west. I backed away from doing this. I even asked the state if they could designate the site where the state has to be and they said, oh, no. It would be the whole thing.
What if, what if the room there at James Park?
And that we could do it at some point in the future when we figure out all the configuration of what everything is doing. Because even if at some point there, where the pool would be demolished, we could put something there. But you only have a certain time period to use the funds, so we want to spend that money right now. Right. And so, we were talking about it and there's no way of getting out of that designation, even in the circumstances that we would need a third cell or a clinical cell, something like that. So, but that, this isn't every year grant that you can go through. So, that's sitting there and that's one of the reasons that we're going to back to it from now. And we're still looking at some others for the state part. And the Kaboom Grant, the third piece of the grant for James Park is in, as they committed. And then Playful City, there will be no designation. Is there that on hiatus? What was that? Is it on hiatus? Nobody's going to be designated as a Playful City 2000.
Or would you still?
Yep. Yep. So, that's true.
That's what we need.
Yep.
The escape park, we were looking at about a fifty by hundred flat. It's going to take up a pretty much chunk, but you know, how about a different little park? Right now, we're looking at something else in the little park.
It's not going to James or not saying to go into Eva Horning, although we think that's actually...
I thought it was going to go in another place.
We have it for Timmerman, but that's the one that would be designated. Now, Eva Horning is considered an LWCF site permanently because it received funds from these grants back in the early eighties. Was eighty-one or two thousand?
Also would be a...
That's land and water conservation. So, but it was...
I think it's also a relief that has to be.
Right.
When it was sold to the city, that it has to be used for recreational use.
Right. But when they got these grant funds, that did it through the federal because these are federal funds. They come through the state and get them through the state because they are actually federal funds.
We, there's not enough revenue, Eva Horning, with the state park and then where they want the new pool.
If they move the pool to where the new pool would be, demolish the old pool, would that be enough?
Would that be enough?
Oh, yeah. Because the pool is eighty feet long, that's just, you know, stuff. So, you've got, you've got, you could put a fifty by hundred in.
So, it's something to consider and we'll keep working on it. We'll keep working on the other side if we find one. Because there's a couple other grants opportunities we're looking at that weren't like knowing it wasn't applying to the southern one.
Mary making, Craft Court, one omnibus hearing, still housing our inmates up in Sanders County. Anything to add?
I think they're in the month of September.
Yep. March first is what I'm looking at. Got the last person hired today, pretty good.
I think that's, you know, maybe, that's...
That ain't here. I think it's situated. I like it.
Cool. Cool. Cool, no activity.
Nope.
Yes.
Still frozen?
Yeah. We'll try to drain it until probably towards the end of March. We'll usually be pretty safe. Usually, we don't drain it until May, but we want to try to see if we can do something with it. End of March, we'll try to get it done.
Sue, all checks and meetings being done, all testing has been completed.
Can we do?
We forgot the school for a moment here.
Um, usually, because of what he's going to be doing and we're talking about the repairs or anything, in the spring newsletter, we always have been putting the trainings and promotions for life guards and I want to know what you guys want me to be doing. I don't want to get into a position where we're saying that, oh, absolutely, go do this training and then they do the training and then we go end up opening it.
You can't hold off, we can just go and put it in the newsletter.
I don't, I don't need to put it in the newsletter. You know, we can always send it out to the schools and stuff, and apply it when you're in the...
I think that's allowed to be.
Okay.
Probably not put it in the newsletter.
Okay.
Water. All checks and meetings being done, all testing has been completed, one water line was dug and capped.
Yeah, it was an interesting thing. There was a crossway where Rob Krantz built his new house, right on, close to the river, within ten feet of the bank, there's a crossway there. I didn't know any better, and I remember he was private property. And he asked us, well, it doesn't run very much and it leaks and I'd like to get rid of it. And I was, you know, so nobody knew where it really came from, but we turned his water off and it kept running. We turned his old house on, it kept running. Where is this coming? Because it's, you know, on the map, it shows this line, you got the mowin', so there's a line running like this and that was the old line. And down there, they put a little line that goes like this and then runs along the riverbank. So, it doesn't say it's hooked to this, it just shows you something like that. Well, that old line, where it shows it's coming on, was discontinued when we did the project. We put a whole brand along there and then shut that off so it can't be fed by that line. And so, well, so we turned off the main. Apologize to Ed. Ed was in the shower. Put it off for very long, but we were trying to figure out where's this water coming from. And so, then we turned the whole main off and it quit. Oh, now, okay, so it's got to be hooked to the new line. I thought it was hooked to the old line and shouldn't be anymore. So, then we started thinking, what can we shut off? And so, we went and traced it and it seemed like it came all the way in the back and then went right straight to the laundromat. And I'm going, hmm, that's where the water, the water system started, was on that hill right there where, uh, Horning. And so, we go in the front and we turn off the water to the laundromat and that whole complex and that hill's there. So, that line, at some point, was on the old one and then when we hooked it on to the new one, it continued and fed that whole line up there. So, in a technicality, if it was, you could say, well, that was their service line, but if, from way back when, it was designed as another main or a room. So, we found it out in this hill and dug down about six feet and found it and cut and capped it. So, it no longer runs all the way down there. It's not being used by anything else but that one crossway that nobody even knew was live. And so, that's gone. Because the reason we got into this, because Rob said he's going to dig another, build another house. So, he's going to be right on top of that line. So, we got it cut and cut it and capped it. And now, from there on, that is their service line. We didn't go all the way up to the house because they had pavement and everything and went out into the dirt there. So, they've got about thirty feet coming up from under the laundromat that is that pipe. But now, that other stuff is all gone and it was actually part of this pipe. We cut it, it's been in there, I think, since the early nineteen hundreds, when we started this water system. And we cut it and we were able to spin the elbow off and that did perfect thread on there. We put a shaft on and plugged it and buried it and ran away before it leaked.
Or Ed came out from the shower with it.
Yeah. So, it was interesting because they had a floor that they could open and show the pipe and you could see where the one came in and then it went like this. Laundromat, house, motel, lines everywhere. Well, which one is it? We never did know which one led out from there. We just went out there and found it, cut and capped it. Then we went to the natural. All fowling and sanding being done. Did a little bit of sanding, but I haven't done much fowling. Quiet in here.
I know, I don't want to say that out loud.
This is my last winter, so I keep going, come on, man, don't kill me. But we do got some bottles we got to start getting to, like that big one in Castle. We're not, we keep filling it with dirt, but it, till that snow pile melts, I'm not going to put the winter mix in because I'm just wasting it. So, I just keep putting dirt in it and blast it.
Put a sign out there, Castle's awake.
Yeah. About what it is. Yeah. Because it drains right to that hole and the stuff won't stick with that much longer.
That's a big hole.
That's a big hole.
The new gas tax funds will be available starting March first. We have a webinar later in this month, they have two webinars. We have a webinar on that, on how to access those funds. So, at the next meeting, there's going to be a resolution that talks about that we're requesting those funds. It's eighty-six hundred and sixteen dollars, which is a little less than they had anticipated that we would be getting because they really didn't know what we'd be getting. So, we have the budget, the budget amount is fine. The match is like around four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars, which we've budgeted to move from general fund over. And then, the guys have been out measuring some of those spots. That's when we brought up that area there. But some of those spots that are really bad, that need to be cut and a patch put in. And it's going to get a couple of phone quotes so that we can access those funds and then we'll get those done. And so, it might be kind of a three-pronged thing because depending on how much it is, it'll be the new gas tax funds, you'll still have the four hundred and fifty dollar match and then possibly use some of the gas tax funds that we have in the original gas tax fund. Because there's two separate things and you cannot use, you cannot use the new, old gas tax, the normal gas tax funds as a match for the new gas tax funds. It is against the rules. They will not allow you to do that. Those matching funds have to come from some other fund, so.
And the new tax has to be used that year, correct?
You can, you can let it sit. You can't, if you don't have a project, you can let it roll with the state, but they only keep it three to five years and then all of the money goes back to the state.
We have to use.
Yeah.
That's what we went and measured, like the corner at the Methodist. We measured that, the one corner at the SNS, the senior citizen corner down there by, in the park. It's all coming, we measured all of the ones that were the worst ones. We'll use that. Because nine, actually nine thousand doesn't go very far for pavement. If it was a street, it would go eight feet.
Not even a quarter block.
But in patching, we can get more stuff done, I think.
And some of those areas are desperate to fix. So, and by next year, it should be closer to twenty grand or so. And you can use it together to do, go for a project. You just have to have a match for that money somewhere else.
The county's going to need a, a PT, Southside Road here on here, so we're definitely, um, trying to create this for this, for this, for this, and this. Still on the table.
I know Jason calls me every now and then to see if the county's still okay with the twenty-five thousand. Yeah, it's still, yeah, there's seventy, close to seventy-one thousand sitting in that center. No. So, and then, well, some of it's going to be used for the set of projects too. Plus, there's, I think, one month that's used for Roger and Rodney's queries. The streetlights that are there by the interchange and that, that have been out for over six months. I emailed Kevin Monahan again, and Cece, his regional supervisor, and asked when they were going to get those repaired because of the, you know, it's so dark, people are having trouble getting around the corners and they're afraid they're hitting pedestrians. So, Kevin said that he has now sent it to the guy who does it out of Missoula, to that guy's supervisor, to see if they can get something going a little faster, so. But those are the state ones. The ones, the poles that you see that are the metal ones along there, those are all state ones. Those are all from the state.
Fire call, just the one fire call for January?
Yeah.
Anything else to add? Sure? Positive? Absolutely.
Calvin, what story on this truck that got brought out here? Is it operational or?
No, it's not operational. We got it from the DNR scene, it was going to be our command rig.
Yeah.
Went after it, talked with Carl Tyler, who's going to toss this by a grand and fix it. I kind of put a watch on it right now. Couple of them are.
I just got wondering why it's still sitting there.
Yeah. We got through that price, so I was like, yeah, you can sit there a little longer.
Council concerns.
I have a couple. I handed out this brochure that I designed last year. I shared with you that I would put together a brochure for the city. I'm going to hand that around. I just wanted you to see, you know, I can make them pretty, but... Right now, it's just a bunch of ideas. And, um, open it up and, you know, I think it's self-explanatory, but what I would like, if you want me to work on it anymore, would be any other ideas that we could put together or put into brochure. The other thing that I did, and I'll hand this around too, you know, it might be, you know, once we get the brochure, that we may want to put together a pamphlet. That would be a little more expensive. But you can do all this, you know, it's a little, little larger. And, you know, and the thing is, what I've found in anything that I've ever done in the area of getting our name or getting my name out or the school, college that I work for, when I've worked on things like this for them, people like pictures. And so, you know, less verbiage, more pictures. And I think we're getting worse about that than better. We're not getting better. People don't like to do a lot of reading, but if we had picture, you know, nice pictures and some other, some other things. Here, you know, on this welcome to Superior Lakes within twenty-five mile radius, Iowa at the trail, river floats. And then, just when I came in, I was reminded the last month, I said something about bird watching and somebody remarked, you know, that was a really good idea. That's a great idea. So, anyway, I wrote that down on this one. So, if you have any other ideas that we could put in that are going to make our city a little, or, you know, Superior a little more attractive, then a brochure would be probably a good thing.
Rick, I meant to bring you and I'll get it to you. I brought back the brochure from Thompson Falls when we went up to Thompson Falls for that meeting. And they had a neat map layout of, I heard, of where things are. You know, because they have a lot of hiking trails and paths and, you know, of course, they have the dam and all of that. That if we could show on a map where the Vista Trail is and where the Big Eddy, you know, that you can walk down to Big Eddy and stuff like that somehow on here.
If you put like a misteric there of bird watching theory or something like that.
Yeah.
Sure.
You could put the bridge on there.
I, you know, I'll be real honest and frank. Most of those map things, they're really cartoonish and I don't, and I find, no, I'm just saying the ones that I've seen are really cartoonish and they aren't valuable for locating, you know? Splash, bright colors, you know, big stars that cover half the town, you know? And so, it becomes, it becomes really, um, a little more difficult. I, you know, I think we need to do something. I was essentially volunteered to do this, so.
I think it's a good start. I mean, I think it's a real good start, Rich. You know, it's telling people who come to town, you know, even if they're just stopping for gas, if that brochure is there, it's probably, let them, you know, spend an hour or two more and then they spend that hour and two and then they say, well, you know, that was pretty interesting. Maybe we ought to make that a designation the next year. You know? So, it would help the local economy.
Or it could. It certainly can, so.
I'll bring that, bring that to one next time. Get that to you.
And the new sign is up.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a cut and paste from one you did because you sent me PDF and I don't know how to manipulate PDF, so.
That's what Matt sent me, so.
So, it was cut and paste. And black and white.
Well, I think if we could keep our costs down too, on printing them, then you could actually put them in the... Is the tourist thing still open in State Region? I mean, there's places like that that they could be, what? Especially, I mean, you know, if you get down to like a penny of coffee or what have you, I mean, that, the more you get it out, the better off you are. I mean, this last fall, I'm coming across the High Line, right before Shelby has stopped at one small place to get a cup of coffee, and there is a big pit of Phil'sburg. They're getting the, the stuff out too, so, you know, I think that's kind of what we need to do if we want to help, you know? Let's face it, tourism is a big mind maker and the more of you can get here, the better off we'd be.
And any other questions for me or anybody like this? I do have one other concern and that is concerning when Roger retires. You know, the greatest cost of any corporation is payroll and benefits. So, my question is, and this is not a suggestion and it's not, it's not my desire, but it's something I think we should look at. And that is, should we consider not replacing Rodney? Just have Rodney take your place, Roger? And then contract other people out when you absolutely need two people doing the job? And I don't know. I mean, I just think it's something that we need to analyze and...
We need to have certified operators, two of them.
Otherwise, one guy's stuck in town twenty-four seven every, every week. As it is, we're on call every other week. Not, not being designed by rules by the state department because we have to check the wells every day. One guy and then now you're trying to call, just, this is just my opinion on it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying...
I get the idea of trying to cut, maybe cut costs, but that wouldn't work.
And costs will change because like if, because our procedure, of course, is to post the five days in-house. If Rodney is promoted, he would move into grade thirteen at year eight, where he's at in his, in his steps. He would still be at grade, year eight, but he would be lower by quite a bit than what he's making right now at year twenty-five. The new person comes in at grade ten, year one, which I think I looked the other day, it was thirteen, thirty-eight or thirty-three. But then, what happens is the parrot essentially is getting that water and sewer certification. And once they get that, they get to move up. So, it will make a bigger change.
I definitely don't think it will.
I just know that, you know, I just, again, I know that salary and benefits and most, most of what is spent in any corporation is payroll and benefits. I've spent in retail, I've spent in school systems, you know? And that's just, and I know a lot of businesses, a lot of corporations, when a person retires out, they're just not replaced. So, that's the reason I brought it up.
Well, and it would, it would be different if we had...
No, I, I just brought it up. Like I said, I'm not for, and it's not, it's not even, it's not my desire, it's not even a suggestion. But it is something I thought we should question and we should analyze.
Yeah, they're down there checking those wells every single day.
Yeah, and you just have to.
Sometimes twice a day.
I mean, I get, trying to save money. But you need to have somebody that's there that's certified and not trying to call and find somebody to come help. If there's a broken water line or a sewer flood and they got to be certified to go work on it, so. You're going to pay one way or the other. You've just got to have two dollars.
Okay. Unfinished business, EPA Superfund update.
So, getting mixed information about the testing of the Bellevue. The phone office is like, we're off to lunch, we have no idea, we have no money, don't call us, we're stimulated. Didn't happen to get ahold of Duke and as he said, he was going to try to contain some funds for year one and indicated that that's probably the case. His qualification is that we should like to have... His qualification is that he would like to have three employees of the property to test the set at one. Technically, the Bellevue employees' property. So we might see him later this year, but he's really concerned that if he does find some waste up there, which mill is there, because I left the excavation of the range there, it's definitely contaminated up there. The tailings happens to be on the work.
Is it my problem or is it sound bad?
Right.
My mind.
Probably.
Whatever.
I have one piece of property in the sound mill.
There's definitely tailings up there. Wayne and I talked a little bit about that, that we might just put it back and loaded it and sort of cap it and something like that. Attempting to get an eight-hour pressure course going, the film that's put that on to Ross, you know, five, six, whatever, attempting to carry it out, so he might come back for the course, but if he does it, then going back out there to the system to try to possibly find somebody. Hopefully we could get one there.
That's the Hazwacker? That's the Hazwacker?
Hazwacker. People that are going to work on the structure, just come in spring and everything else. Keeping up with the quarterly reports, they kind of said that, hey, you're behind and that always creates a situation of challenges. We go financial information, they're just. Again, fairly consistent about going to the stone, but maybe the advisory group in there. Definitely a little concerned about that process because they are just not feeding any input about, hey, the downstreamer, they're going to potentially get it. They're just going to try to do that and clean it up the site, take care of the site and when we leave the site, that's it. So we haven't had a collected samples, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but collected samples, samples that have been sitting there for two years because they didn't have funding for that. So we don't even have a base line of, we've been at the past, the Zula, you know, some down there, but again, even what they've done is the same process. Not still okay with the undo that I have, but take a look at, sometimes we can see where we are, but we have to do that again until we rewrite the whole contract again. If that's the case, I'd really like to try to get candidates involved and be part of the contract because we've been, a lot of hours, we've been based in EPA and been a part of it, so I kind of pain now, feel that I recognize that we've got to be a part of it, not the contract again. But it's also very complicated because I have a really complicated timekeeping thing for the EPA. I mean, anytime that I work at the EPA, I can take advantage of county and, and I see how to make the contract. I have not got any soil applications from the board yet.
They haven't officially started. They thought they were going to, we got a conference call tomorrow with Ken.
Tomorrow at 10:00 AM. You can come over to the office because we're going to be on conference call with them.
We just found that out today.
Did they select a candidate?
Bjorn Johnson.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they moved a bunch of stuff in.
Was he in?
Yeah, I think. I don't know who he is, so I just assumed he was there because they came in.
Or one of his representatives.
And then they wanted to dig four different times and canceled every time. And then the last time they said they got nailed up by owners.
Probably the home grant because you have to jump all the hoops before they get the notice to proceed.
Well, just the main thing is what this soil moves off site. I can imagine this can't be done.
Yeah, I think it's pretty slippery there.
So it's a soils application?
What?
Soils application?
Yeah, soils disturbance application. I don't know who the, I think the contract, he hid or he was running the pre deal or something.
I don't remember. But he might be part of this conference call.
Sent this out, sent this back and if he loses with contract, he's all wanted to be charged and such. Get it from them.
Yeah.
Feeling or not, come this year, hand it out for some time.
So tomorrow we'll turn the number to, bring that up.
I guess the main thing is we'll pick the actual contract.
Yeah, that was, he was awarded.
Good by the town.
Yes, I called and talked with Lisa at Swan River Gardens because they probably this month, they're sending an invoice or, you know, they put a deposit down to the flyers. They'll be planting this, this month. So if you don't hear from her by the end of the month, that means we're not going to make a call. But I just talked to her today, so. So that, oh, and just by the way, I haven't given up on Mr. Felix. I bugged him again. Steve Felix about our bridge, fixing the railings on our bridge. I talked to him on the ninth of this month and he said, I think actually because I called, he got that thing in the mail, not the mail, but in our packets about MVP and I talked to someone there that had something to do with bridges. And then all of a sudden, the next day, I got a call from Mr. Felix. So I don't know what happened there, but anyway, he said, maybe spring. So we'll see. We'll see what happens.
Anything else further to add?
Nope, except.
Fire chief position. When we did our interviews, I actually went very well. I was very happy to see the rural fire department guys come in and help us out. And we do have a recommendation to accompany to ask the president to be the fire chief.
Having been on the interview committee, both candidates are very qualified. It was, having a couple guys rural show up, it was the first time I've seen them show up for an interview. And it was, it was very helpful to get that input from that side. Yeah, that, our recommendation goes to Steve.
You need a motion?
So what?
I'll make a motion later.
I just have a question about who he is.
Your double right now is the assistant fire chief.
Ah, one of you is assistant. Now there's the other. That's you.
Steve's above you.
Above you, okay. He's not here tonight.
No.
Okay.
He's long ways from here.
Okay. That's why I talked to him on the phone.
Because they were talking, say, a year and a half.
So where is he?
At his own vacation.
Oh, he's on vacation.
Yeah. So first to the, okay. Going through that part first and then this part? Any further discussion on having Steve as the fire chief? And then I'll come to this one.
What leadership positions has he had before besides he was?
He has a lot of new school experience.
Oh, yeah. He was a, he was a manager of a city in California.
Oh.
For 34 years.
Okay, that's a little bit.
He's been on the side of Harvard here.
10 years.
Okay, 10 years here?
Yeah, 10 years here.
Hamilton area.
Okay. Wow, he certainly has had lots of experience.
You don't know his father.
I, you know, maybe I know his face. I've probably seen him.
Well, you don't see him.
Yeah, I guess I will if he's going to be on me for that.
He's been to Alabama before.
Has he?
Yeah.
Okay, because they haven't raised his face, but.
Any further discussion on that part? Question?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, because they would like to do a little bit different for wages wise. Would rather have a stipend. Yes, he would. His proposal, proposal, sorry, is that he have a monthly stipend of a thousand dollars, resume no further benefits and be supported by a strong volunteer assistant fire chief, receiving a similar monthly, monthly stipend of 500. Together the chief and two assistants will share the duty command for their department. He says that he will broom a second assistant chief, a departmental promotion. Over time, that can also take the, he goes with stipend to assistant chief as a fair solution for sharing the duty and the resulting commitment to the fire department. The total cost and maybe it'll be about $5,000. It's a split between the rural and the town.
So he's getting two, did I hear that, two assistants?
Yes. They always have to have two assistants. One is the lead assistant that usually is the one, and then one will be trained in training.
Yeah, once you get the staff.
Yeah. But there will be no health insurance. Steve, Steve has health insurance already and counts first.
How does that affect the rest of our health insurance?
It's not going to bother, the only thing is that that position will not be in insurance school, but it won't affect the rest of the, the rates are offset by.
Steve didn't get any of the, my name, so.
Why what?
Why he wants to do a salary this way?
Because, because he says that the retirement at his house would count first.
Yeah.
Did that mess up Cal Bru?
It would.
Do they take it down? They take it down if he makes a month?
Yes. Yeah, but if he does a stipend, it doesn't, it doesn't affect it.
Ah. It had to be.
I'm glad I'm the head of the federal government.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a bad proposal myself. I mean, it also helps the assistant chief. I mean, he's, he's putting in time and stuff, you know? Sure, you know, a little stipend for him too, wouldn't hurt, would it? You want to hear me? It's still less than what we were paying, or about the same as what we were paying the last chief. You know, I'm all for it.
Committing a motion on that too. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion and accept Steve's proposal.
I'll second it.
Ooh, I heard Bonnie first.
Okay.
Bonnie's getting quick.
Any further discussion on that?
I kind of wanted a little chance, think about it. Apparently I'm the one, I'm the only one dragging feet.
What were you?
Well, I think so.
I know, I'm right with you there.
Go for it.
Sure.
Yeah, go for it.
Question?
Aye.
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 Contemplating just that.
Which is our mental.
I was just going to call it the other way around. You would have to go first.
I'll start on that side and make it work that way. I could do that next time.
No, don't mess things up.
Recycling project.
Okay, Lorene's going to do her little report here on what's ahead.
Little update. Good evening. So last month you approved going ahead with the letter that I submitted, but we did edit it a little bit for what you saw last month. And that letter went out to local businesses from Ronnie Phillips, our man. And so there were about 125 letters prepared, roughly 100 of them were mailed. There were some that we didn't have addresses for, but that I'll be following up on. And then that was kind of like the introduction letter of the deal we're trying to work out here, and I will be following those up in person. And so any of them that had to do with county, they have a fiscal year starting July 1st, so this is good timing that we can hopefully get into county budgets if anybody that does county fiscal year could get us in on that. And then there were three organizations, Blackfoot, Town Pump and Northwest Energy that have online applications that I will download that and follow up with that as well. And so we've had a couple of people respond, but it seems like so far that the response is positive, so I'm looking forward to doing these follow-up for the businesses and people are quite excited. Today I met with both principals of the school and I am on the agenda for next month's council meeting, council board, school board meeting, which I was shortening it up, is the same as the council meeting, but it's at 6:30. So hopefully I will be on the agenda soon, next month, so that I can then also make it to this meeting to give an update on how that's going. But it looks positive in that realm as well. They were both very excited to hear about this and wanted to participate. I had anticipated renegotiating with Republic on the cost, but I'm rather disappointed that that did not work out well, that I was told that the industry is getting really difficult. They're having to pay, go through the gate for their transportation, where they're taking it into Koma to get it sorted and so, blah, 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 long story short, that's the best price they can give us at this time. And so we'll just figure out how to work with that. And I, I think that it's definitely doable. Two other pieces that we're working on is education, like a little brochure, pamphlet, so that people will know what goes into the bin. And then the other piece would be like a questionnaire that as people show up to bring their stuff to the bin, when we get to that point, we'd have a little questionnaire for people to be, you know, on how it's working for people and so forth. What I.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, well, a couple of things. So what I would like to propose and make a motion that the town commit a certain amount per month to this recycle project, so she does go follow up with the businesses, she can say, look, the town's putting in, and I would like to propose $200 a month, what can you help us do for the rest of it? So that would only go forward if we could get the businesses to make up the other $250 to pull, make one pull a month, which we're, that's what we're anticipating. Now, there's no way, no crystal ball to figure that. We have to try it first to see how quickly the bin is going to fill up, but we're anticipating one pull a month and we'll see how that goes. So I would like to propose that we commit that as long as we get, we commit the $200 a month if we get the matching part from the other businesses and stuff too, so that she could go to people, okay, look, the town's putting in $200 a month, you know, how can you help us make up, you know? There's, all the people that got the letters, you know, know that it's costing $450 a pull, so.
How much did we ask the businesses?
Well, the letter said 100 and we didn't quite, we should have explained that more and that's, Lorene is going to go to the business and explain that. That would be for someone that's going to put in a lot, you know, like maybe Napa and, you know, the Four Aces, they have a lot of cardboard, Durangos, and they're going to put in a lot into the bin, that we would expect them to step up a little more money. But that it was kind of a sliding scale for smaller, because I've talked to a couple of businesses that are willing. that are willing, that they can't afford a hundred dollars, of course, um, but that they'd be willing to put in twenty dollars and commit that, you know, per month to that, uh, project recycling. So, um, I think if people see we're in, if they're in, kind of thing, um, that we can make this happen.
It's, are you, are you just going to allow residents of, or businesses of the city in the city limits, or are you still talking like St. Regis and?
County mind.
County why?
Well, I don't wanna close it off to, I mean, obviously, if, if businesses in St. Regis started bringing all their cardboard up here, we would expect them to put in some money, because that would cause probably another, you know, pull from Republic. Um, I would not anticipate that at first, but anyone that does not live in the city limits, uh, we would ask them for a little bit of donation, maybe at the, you know, at, they live in the county, that, you know, a resident living in the county bringing stuff, we'd ask them for a little donation, a couple bucks in the can, kind of thing, if they're gonna use that. But businesses that are not in city limits, I think would, you know, if they're gonna bring a lot, I mean, if they want bucks, paper, I mean.
If I may say, the bin that's currently in Alberton is open to anybody who wants stock and put recyclables, appropriate recyclable materials. Nobody's turned away, but you have to ask for the key at that bin, and so, when you do ask for the key, you're solicited for a donation. And that was something similar that we had discussed by having the, the bin person, that there would be a staff person there, a volunteer, that, where she would be soliciting for a donation to support the bin.
Even if it's a buck or something, you know, to put in, to, to the kitty.
And, and part of the responsibility too would be to ensure that boxes are broken down, for instance, so that the bin could be as utilized as possible.
Where in the financial, how would we cancel them? I mean, could we tie my hands over and go?
We're gonna have a separate fund.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a separate fund for that, so that I can.
Yeah, I see a problem there.
Recycle fund thing.
Yeah, for that would handle the, the, any of the donations, anything that came from the businesses would go into that fund, and so, when the expenditure was written out of that fund, the, like, one hundred, two hundred dollars, whatever the city would do, would come right out of the general fund, but that piece, the other piece would come out of that fund, so you'd track it.
I mean, you're asking the city to put in money for this, but you, you're not getting anything from the county. Like, you're letting either county people, businesses come in and just ask a donation, but you're asking the businesses here for a specific amount. I mean, it's, to me, it don't look equal. It looks like the people.
I would say businesses need to pay.
Of the town, or, you know.
Well, again, I think if the businesses from out of, of the city limits, if they're gonna be using, utilizing it quite a bit, I think they would need to step up a little bit more money.
And, and be so much easier for support of the bin.
Right, on a monthly basis.
And some of those waters went to businesses outside of the city limits.
Yeah, I recall that, where it's had everything around.
But there's no requirement for them to do that, they don't have to give you money.
No.
But then they would not be allowed to, to do that.
Well, then you gotta lease it and determine that. Hey, I was just curious.
Yeah, it would be the person's position.
Yeah. I mean, I don't anticipate a big wrangle with people. I think more than likely, we're not gonna have as many, I mean, we're thinking there's gonna be a line down Mullen Road, for people with.
There is once a year.
Well, we're bringing everything, yeah.
And it's amazing how much they bring in.
If you wanna compare what's happening in Alberton, just for reference sake, we're charged three hundred dollars for that bin. The town puts in two hundred, and I collect from the local businesses there to support the cost of the rest, because we were actually anticipating two pulls a month, but it's actually been one pull a month. So we're money ahead in Alberton to pay for the bin. And that also allowed superiors to have a bin now, because Republic had allotted the extra bin, and so now, that bin would be available for the change-out for superiors to structure from there. So it quickly became self-supporting in Alberton.
You know, in the end, if it doesn't work out, we get on the program too.
Well, right, I mean, if we don't get the other businesses to step up, then it's a non-issue, you know, I mean, we just won't use that money for that. So I'm just, I'm wanting to say, yes, we will do it, they will do it, so that she can go and say to the businesses, "The town's gonna put in two hundred," cause we really didn't commit to a number. But I think if people know, okay, you know, this is, I think people want.
It sounded like you were making a motion there when you sorted it out.
I made the motion.
Well, I'll second it.
That, that the town put in two hundred dollars, uh, to the recycle program, um, if the other businesses will step up as well.
And you went to the county and the county said that they don't have any money?
Haven't gone to.
I haven't gone to any county.
No, not yet. No, I think it's anticipated.
We've sent letters to different organizations that are part of the county, separately, but not the county.
But the county itself, so we're gonna use.
We sure can.
City taxpayer money, but we ain't gonna use any county taxpayer money.
Gonna try for it. I think that's what is planned here.
Well, let me, let me ask a question here. How much money, how much recyclables you suppose the county gang that they're, come up with?
The courthouse?
Yeah.
But if they put it on, with the boxes, they're giving, are they sending plastics? I mean, everybody knows.
So, so they can.
So if the county, I mean, if you wanna go make a pitch at the county, they've got a lot right there in the courthouse. If they wanted to pitch in a couple hundred bucks a month or something.
Sure, sure.
All that stuff gets recycled instead of, you know, landfill.
Sure.
It doesn't hurt to ask them, I'm sure they never gonna.
We have Shirley do that, since she works there.
What?
We have Shirley do that, since she works there.
And she's not here.
And she's not here, so we can.
Always vote for the worst night.
That's right. We'll give her that homework to do.
I make a motion to ask Shirley.
So, and she, Lorraine, we'll link it over to the [inaudible].
I know, I know, she's quite the, quite the.
We do have a motion on the table. Any further discussion on that motion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Give it a second. Yeah, okay.
I should've had a little more discussion, um, when you called to that. As long as I have a statement.
Okay. Aye?
Aye.
Realize what they will notice him.
I need you to help the gazebo.
Oh, yes.
I apologize for my disparaging remarks last night. That bums us, it's a funny shit.
Those guys are gonna move it.
Who do you think?
We think.
We looked at it, and you gotta take the roof off, and it's, it's sitting down on the deck, it's just screwed to the deck, so we gotta be able to brace it and see if we can lift it up and slide it off to the side. And if we can get that petty bone, I don't know if Rod still has it.
Oh, he doesn't have it?
He thought he was gonna have it sold.
Oh.
That's the thing we need to be able to do, cause it reaches so far in, it can go right in. But we'll see, we'll keep working on it, see what happens.
Will it successfully, Roger will name it after you.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna strap it down, cause it's really tough, Eddie, cause that roof, um, you know, sticks out all, probably two or three feet all the way around, and then screw it all the way down on top, and then to decide if we're gonna try to take that off, or just leave it all in one, you know, strap the crap out of it, and hope it makes it, I already told Ronnie he'd drive it.
Don't blame me.
Yeah, I didn't go that far, but he's gonna be doing this, and I think, I've, I've only hit one thing in twenty-five years, I'm not doing, that's all I'm gonna do.
Can't be any worse than moving a log house across that bridge.
No.
When it was sitting like this, on that bridge.
Okay, next on the agenda, historical monument.
Okay, we, I haven't gotten as far with that project. Um, I have to get a taxpayer ID, so I can open a bank account to actually start the brick, um, donation project, to raise money for that historical monument. Um, you, you remember, did I, did I bring that?
Yeah.
The picture of that, yeah, okay. So, um, I think I'll have more to report next month about.
About this one?
Yeah, versus table that, yeah.
Mr. Curtain, new business.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Curtain, I'm representing the Old Schoolhouse Rock Car Show. It's gonna be, uh, June second, first Saturday in June, and just, uh, coming in this evening to ask permission again for blocking off Second Avenue. Uh, I'm not gonna try to get any other streets blocked off, we'll wait for next year for that one. Uh, it'll be a soft block, and I've talked to Firehouse, and they have appreciated blocking the whole block off, but it's just a ribbon that goes across there, so we don't get, we gotta watch it this year. Last year, I guess it kinda got filled up across the street from Firehouse, and I don't know how it, who parked there, but keep that open. But that's why we block it off, so we don't get civilian vehicles in there, and we don't do no parking down there. But we block it off so they can pull their trucks out, and the kids have enjoyed it really tremendously the last couple of years. So that's, all I'm really looking for is just doing a soft block. Saturday, I'll be in here five, six in the morning, I'll get it blocked off, and we'll take it down for, between four and five.
Do you want, do you want it blocked off Friday evening? Or Saturday?
No.
Just Saturday?
Yeah, just Saturday, yeah. There, we're having, uh, Lift Up is, uh, we're having our cruise, uh, Friday evening, we're gonna start around four, four-thirty. And we're just gonna cruise around town this year. Everybody's had a chance with the cruise, you know, Alberton, the West End, St. Regis, this year, we're just doing it here in town. So we're just gonna cruise all around town, we're gonna go down to the hospital, I gotta work the details out there, so all the seniors can come out and look at the cars and everything, and then we're gonna come back, and Lift Up is gonna put on a sock hop in the gym. I don't know what they're gonna have for music yet, they're still working on that, but we're just getting started and everything, but so, I mean, there'll be people parking all over anyway, so, but I come in around four, between four and five in the morning, Saturday mornings, and I get everything blocked off, so nobody blocks, the truck being able to get in and out of the post office, that was a problem years past, so, that's, that was it. It's just gonna be a soft block, mostly it's just vendors out there on the two sides of the street, the center's open. We always keep that open in case a fire truck has to get out, so.
Are you gonna need the, uh, complete tables again too this year?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Totally forgot about that. Thank you. Yes, if we can get five, six, eight. Six.
Six.
Six, I'll take it. I'm just starting to count how many we have, where, where, take them all down from the Timberman, because there's nothing going on down there, there's three down there, and then get three from the other park. Just so we leave enough down there for somebody.
For somebody, yeah. Did you, did you hear that, down in Timberman, take the three beds down there, and then three from the Eba Horni?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Perfect. That'll be great.
Um, do we need a motion?
I'll make the appropriate one. Where the hell you think's best?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Pay Matrix. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Bye.
Uh, we, we're still gonna have mayor's choice, so mayor has to get down there, pick a car.
Tell that little man over there too.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah. And we're gonna have sheriff's choice, so you're gonna have to be down there, pick out your best car. And that, but that's always about, incidentally, you know, it's the people's choice, sheriff's choice. We're not, you don't have to look, it's what car do you like, you know? Maybe, you know, Camaro is your car in the day, or whatever, you know, whatever car you like, that's the guy that gets the trophy.
Cool.
So, just reminder, June second, be there, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Sorry, couldn't help myself.
We're gonna lose bus.
At least I didn't front him. And not behind him.
By the way, I like fifty-five children, so.
Fifty-five seven. Well, Kelly, if I can't make it that day, I will probably go. I need to be out in the car.
I did it for Mike one time. I think I could pass you, we did.
Okay, Pay Matrix. Okay. You're up. Okay, so, Montana's minimum wage went up, that's the base grade, of grade one, is based on minimum wage. Usually don't have anybody that goes past the third year in that minimum wage one, which you would have to cashier it. Then, so, you can receive a copy of the current year matrix. Roger's, those positions will be real interesting to budget this year. Roger will be budgeted his position through September thirtieth. We're working on a timeline, so that we have some seamless going, and then, or Rodney doesn't get hit, be completely by himself for two months like Roger does.
I think in March, we'll, uh, have you guys opening up at the in-house.
So that. Yeah, and so that, that, if he promoted him, that position would start like September first, he'll be here till the thirtieth, so that gives him time to make that transition, and then start advertising for, like, Rodney's position would be, like, in July for three weeks, so that August could be the interviews, and then he would be hired. Roger's position, because it is a department head, comes back, mayor makes the recommendation, council approves, he can, Rodney or Roger can hire that second person. Usually, the mayor's involved in that, he doesn't have to come back to the council on that one. So, so there's gonna be a couple, three months of different, different levels in there, and that's kinda why we're getting started early. Um, there's a one-point-eight percent increase in the, in the minimum wage. You can see where each person lands, I tried to circle with their name around it. Rodney in, on the first level, I'm looking at his at grade, right now, he's a grade twelve at year eight. If he is promoted into Rodney's position, would jump to grade thirteen at that same year. That's how the policy works in that. Ruth will be, uh, year, she's at year five in her position. Rodney, Roger, right now, it would be in year twenty-five, and I just started my thirty-fifth year, so.
She's four months old.
Brent can technically retire.
I know, but.
She need to do it. I know, I do, I do.
I do.
So, that's where mine is sitting. I gave you the what's current, and then what the proposed is, so that you can see what the differences will be. And that, it will make a difference, of course, if, if there's no, since there's no health insurance, there's definitely leeway in that. And the ways for the health insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve a new Pay Matrix.
Second? Any further discussion?
Don't have much choice.
Were they all good?
All right, question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sorry.
I like my. I should save you, there's a couple things.
Well, you just let us know, we'll fix it.
No, that's complete.
Kelly, there's something that you can't...
Yeah.
That's what you did assassination.
For the Montana Department, it's not bad. They are, um, I'll talk about that in a minute. In the word, I'll talk about court excuses, okay.
Okay, next item is the budget amendment resolution number 448. Okay.
Okay, so the fire department... You can be that one.
So it's a resolution of the town's period providing for the amendment of the budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018 for the fire department special projects, protection and control, and small items. Five thousand eight hundred forty-two bucks.
The fire department received a check. They went out on, I think you guys called it the blueberry truck?
Yeah, it was the mentality out of the bridge.
Okay. And they provided mutual aid and worked on that truck and everything out there.
Yeah, we ruined two tires, two sets of gear on an oil car and that's enough.
So what they wanted to do, instead of that being just dumped into the general fund, they want to be able to replace that turnout gear for the department. And to be able to do that, it was easiest if, since it was unanticipated funds, amend the budget for the small projects fund and put some money there and then, then we can track that they did it that way.
I think you should say the department.
That's what it, that's what we're trying to do is keep it for the department. This way they get to use it for, for the thing.
I make the motion and we approve, resolution number 448.
Oh, second? Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And so, next one is resolution number 449. And this one is also small projects. A resolution of the town's period providing for the amendment of the budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. And this is the wildfire, is that the same thing?
They can, no, this is separate. This is actually a little grant that the fire department received from the Montana Wildlife Relief Fund for the purchase of radios and turnout gear. And so, this is another one like we did with the town pump grant and that. We run it through the special projects so that it's separated and we can keep track of it.
I make the motion to adopt resolution 449.
Second?
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All right. Location for new swimming pool? Is that a figure?
Well, what, it, I asked Brenda for this to be put on the agenda. Um, we talked about it once here, you know, and there was a lot of okay, but we never really had a motion. Now, um, we're ready, we're getting ready here to go to an engineer and get, you know, a study. I'd like for the engineer to tell us on both. But, you know, there's no reason to do it a new location if, if the council will approve. You know, we'd be wasting money there, you know, on engineers. Some people think that, you know, we could keep it the same spot, you know. I think a newer spot would get you out more sun. You'd be able to utilize solar heating way better, you know. But, so, that is why I asked for Brenda to put this on the agenda.
I don't think so.
I don't think that's, I don't think they have to be surveyed because of the highway.
Of the highway, you...
No. Uh, if, if you summon the strip down by the Lutheran church?
Yeah.
Not all that is...
No.
It's all that would have spent, but the end of the park, that's all right.
So you're not willing to sign it?
Yeah, I was wondering how close to the interstate.
Where at are you? So maybe approve the east of, east...
East of the...
The tennis court.
The tennis courts, there, you know.
Very funny, isn't it?
Are you talking about the baseball field?
Mm-hmm.
It's hardly a real...
You know. And you said that the possibility of that skate park or something, so we can definitely, we would know then by the size.
Yeah.
When we go to the engineers, one thing that, that, from the feasibility study, we're asking for the top. Where if it, if it becomes unrealistic, then we can cut down on, on size. But it is 25 meters, which is 82 feet.
About that.
Which, which is what the current one is. And we're hoping to go four to six lanes for, uh, which, I, I forget what the, the width of that is. Each, each lane, I think, is 2.5 meters. And then they allow, they like to have excess on the outside lanes, so then, for whatever reason. So that, that's why I asked that this be brought up. I'd like to make a motion if it's feasible, that we would utilize that space.
Now, second?
Need for the discussion on that?
It'll also help during fundraising. We have a place that we should put in.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And the second one is, um, I am working on a fundraiser. It will be su- it's not a plunge, not a polar plunge. Special Olympics pretty much does polar plunges and women and trims and polar plunges. So, I come up with an idea of, uh, a pirate theme. It's gonna be called Walk the Plank. Oh, basically they'll walk one, two steps, walk out on the board, into a portable tank, which I talked with, with, um, assistant chief here on the phone. They have one. The Forest Service has a one that's three feet deep, you know. I think yours is two feet, you have said?
Definitely deeper than that.
Yeah, uh, I haven't, I'm still working on this, but what we need is someplace for them, when they get out of it, to go change, you know. And I'd like to use the pole house, um, as a place for them to change. Um, we could rope off so that nobody goes up, um, to the pole area, correct?
Isn't there a door that they lock?
Yeah, we can lock that big sliding door.
Okay, whatever.
And they just go and use the locker room.
Yeah, that's basically what, you know, um... I don't have a date for it yet because I have one, only one more hurdle that, that I have to get over. Um, but thinking that it will possibly be in April. But I'll, like, you know, next council meeting. Hopefully I can get that last hurdle, get over the last hurdle. And what it will be is, people will, will have a pledge sheet and they go out and get people to pledge. And if you get over a certain amount in your pledges, then we'll give you a T-shirt, you know. It, it works good for Special Olympics. I mean, um, what is it? I, I read, uh, Billings, actually, um, which is huge, but, but they raised 42,000 on, on plunge. So, I thought, well, heck, if I could raise 5% of that, that'd be, you know, well worth the effort. And the fire department has agreed to fill the tank and, and the tank would be put off on the grass or in the parking lot, depending on what is the best, um, so...
Who jumps in the plunge?
Whoever is, goes out and gets the pledges. If you go out and get pledges, then you go up and walk the plank. Now, for the polar plunge, they go up, some of them just go and stick their hand in or stick their foot in it. They don't jump in that cold water. Now, um, we, we, we weren't necessarily, depending on what the temperature is in April, um, you know, how cold the water will actually be, you know. If you're lucky, it could be warmer.
It ain't cold, I don't...
It could be chilly.
Yeah.
But those people are responsible for collecting pledges.
Oh, so you're paying to see this person jumping on the ice, huh?
What you're doing is you're giving everybody an individual chance to help raise money for the...
Got you, okay. Got it.
So we have a margin of things how the EMT is there?
Okay, I make a motion that we allow, um, it's now called People for the Pole, okay? Um, we changed, they changed the name. Use the changing room for fundraising.
One second? Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, read the...
I will give you an update. Um, local government services, who is the one group that requires or sets out what we have to report on and that, um, sent out a survey which is, looks like they are going to go to the legislature and go to a regulatory reporting for small communities under 25, 2500 and under, which would be us, which would eliminate a lot of the GASP requirements. With the exception that if we came down to certain federal funds, you know, if we are over the $750,000, we always have to have an audit anyway because we always have more than money than that. But we might have to do some of the GASP reporting on a full accrual basis if we had a certain type of funding or something like that. But it looks like, my concern was, and I had several conversations with Dan Simmons, the bond council, about it because it affects all of us in the state who have bonds. We have rev, we have two rev, no, we have four revenue bonds and the one general obligation bond. And, you know, it talks about GAAP, GASP account, and not GASP, but GAAP accounting, which is generally accepted accounting principles. And my concern was that we wouldn't be able to do this regulatory if we're still having to require, go by the bond covenants. And so they're looking at making sure that the bond, like as the state revolving fund, which most of our revenue bonds are, and USDA, which is our general obligation bond, seem to be, be okay with the regulatory. And that would eliminate a lot of that report. So, yeah, I might be coming back to you and asking at some point when they do that, some backup and that because it's a huge thing. It would, it would take the notes section, what, most, the majority of the notes section out of that, which is about 40 pages. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, one of the webinars this month is on the new reporting or changes to, um, other post-deployment benefits, which they call OPAM, GASP certified. That's a two or three hour webinar that I have on the 21st. Yeah.
Okay. Any further?
I don't have anything else.
Consent agenda.
I make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Second?
The only question I have, we have forklifts?
Yeah, we do. It's a, it's a, we got it through surplus.
Yep.
And it's out here in the bay.
I...
You'll have to show it to them, Kelly.
Can't you pick that building up with that? Might be able to, just if we can get close enough because of the deck. Well, if you can, if you can lift it up a little bit, stick it on a pipe and roll it. Well, yeah, you can get it over there, but it's with that, I was looking at that, the petty bone has very big wheels that will, um...
So don't dig...
Won't sink as much when I, I'd use that forklift going through the park when we did the park and sank. And that wasn't even, that was there in the summer. And it just sank. Well, your counterweight is, is pretty heavy on it. But with that, with, with open with that petty bone, we could pretty much stay in that thing and then just, because it reaches out there a long ways and then to be able to hit it. This is all theory.
Okay.
No actuality in any of it, right? Well, I don't, I, I can't imagine. No, it's not. The roof is, the head is...
A couple questions.
Consent agenda. Are you ready for the question?
Do you have a question?
I do.
Aye.
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 So, are you happy?
No, one more question.
We're making, yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn. Well, let's talk about it.
Wait, we haven't answered the question yet.
All right.
Oh, actually, I'll hold.
Okay.
I got a second.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye. Thank you. Aye.
Thank you.